So, this is the second session of our public hearing on landfills and our waste disposal strategy. So let me explain the proceedings to deputations. Each deputation will be given three minutes. Three minutes definitely is not enough, but then we have limited time and there will be a timer to keep the time. And as we have a large number of deputations today, each deputation will only have three minutes, no more than three minutes, and then we'll move on to the next deputation. And please note that what you say today will not be covered by the Electrical Powers and Privileges Ordinance. Let me now introduce the officials to you. We have Mr. Wong Kamsing, Secretary for the Environment, Ms. Michelle Ah, Political Assistant, Mr. Albert Lam, Deputy Director of Environmental Protection, Dr. Ellen Chan, Assistant Director, and Mr. Lawrence Law, Principal Environmental Protection Officer. And our first speaker is Mr. Otto Poon.
Chairman, thank you. I speak on behalf of the Hong Kong Climate Change Forum. About two decades ago, the EPD published a paper called Waste Reduction Framework Plan. And about 10 years ago, the then Secretary for the Environment, Transport and Works, Dr. Sarah Liu, published another paper and the content is essentially the same as the content of the first paper. And recently, the E N B has published the third paper, Hong Kong Blueprint for Sustainable Use of Resources 2013 to 2022. And again, the content is similar to that of the previous two documents. And we're disappointed because the government hasn't proposed effective measures to tackle the waste problem. We saw it to progress in the past two decades. If we look at overseas experience in dealing with the waste problem and if we take into account the lifestyle we practice in Hong Kong, I don't think we can reduce waste to such a level that we no longer need landfills and incinerators. This is really an urgent problem we are facing. We're living in a false paradise if we think we can do our way with landfills and incinerators. We are being unrealistic. So I hope that LECO will approve the funding for the extension of the three landfills. And I also hope that the LECO will approve funding for the construction of incinerators. The government should show its determination here. And so on behalf of the Hong Kong Climate Change Forum, I support funding for the extension of the landfills. Thank you. Mr. Ng Kin Hua.
Thank you, Chairman. The Hong Kong government has not been effective in tackling the waste problem. It has been relying on taxes or fees or extension of landfills. It has adopted a high-handed approach. Mr. Edward Yau, when he was Secretary, implemented or launched the plastic bag levy. And I want to say that the consumption of plastic bags has not been reduced because we have more people using plastic refuse bags and also so-called environmentally friendly bags. Now concerning how the government tackles waste, I think we are talking about waste, trying to tackle waste. And I don't think waste can really find effective ways to tackle waste. So the government should not simply rely on introducing more levies or taxes. You should try to involve NGOs. You should try to involve the public. You know that we have got young people who have come up with very innovative ideas to produce fertilizer, to turn waste into fertilizers. And there are also who have been using waste to try to produce energy and to use ash and turn it into cement. So we see a lot of wisdom in the community. The government should try to engage the community. And I think for these incompetent officials, they should be landfilled or they should be asked to tackle the various offices or councils or committees. Mr. Look or Mr. Ho. Now, we are of the view that we should try to reduce waste at source and then if there are no other alternatives, we have to rely on landfilling and incineration. Concerning the Action Blueprint, which has just been published, we understand that the government has a determination to reduce waste. And then there are proposals concerning municipal solid waste charging. We support the directions in the paper. We are of the view that we need to reduce waste and we need to rely on these various measures to help us achieve the target of reducing waste. I hope that government or LECO can closely monitor the performance of the government in this regard. And there should be concrete action taken by the government to try to reduce our MSW by 40%. We need commitment on the part of the government. We need monitoring by LECO. And we understand that there is waste which has to be disposed of at landfills. And so we do agree that landfills may need to be extended. But the premise is that the government must closely monitor the government's efforts in implementing the proposals in the Action Blueprint, including the target of 40% with regard to MSW. In fact, there is a lot which needs to be done. For example, there are many government departments and also suspended organizations like the Hospital Authority. And they can be asked to require their contractors to reduce waste and then canteens can also try to reduce food residue.
The blueprint has not covered these in detail and there are not enough statistics. We have to step up monitoring efforts and implement the overall Waste Reduction Plan and build more waste management facilities for solid waste. Hong Kong's waste volume will only go up with population growth and economic development. By 2017, we still have 10,000 tons of solid waste. And it's expected that the three existing landfills will be saturated. So we support the government plans to extend these landfills so that it can solve the immediate problem and it can solve the problem of not having a place for these wastes. Our suggestion is that in future operations of these landfill sites, they have to minimize nuisance to the residents. We suggest the extension of this southeast landfill to only accept construction waste and we have to step up monitoring efforts. And the government also has to monitor air quality at the two other landfill sites. They have to do something about the problem of odor. For refuels vehicles, they should be upgraded to Euro models. And in the transportation of waste, the sewage release can also be a nuisance to residents. And we also support the promotion of a good code of practice for RCVs and to train the operators of RCVs. We also suggest setting up roads exclusively for RCVs. So we will not see RCVs and normal vehicles operating on the same roads. And can landfill gas be used to generate power? And after the landfills are used up, can we reuse those areas and build other facilities? And we understand the government's need to extend landfills, but on the long term, they have to implement further measures to reduce waste at source.
Mr. Alex Chan, thank you, Chairman. I represent the Nonprofitable Thirties Group. The government announced the Hong Kong Blueprint for Sustainable Use of Resources 20322 and the target was to reduce the disposal rate of MSW by 40% by 2022. This is a very aggressive target. I think Hong Kong is many years behind in terms of waste reduction when you look at countries like Korea and cities like Taiwan. This target of 40% cannot be considered very aggressive by international standards. If you have read the news recently, Norway has announced they have been actively involved in MSW recycling and their percentage has reached 70%. With incineration facilities, they face a problem by many European countries and that is they need to import waste. And in the U.S., and they implemented food waste filling. And the disposal rate of MSW reached 75%. And after citing these two examples, I want to respond to this blueprint proposal by the government. If we look at international experience, the government should conduct a careful analysis of these plans. If we look at cases internationally, we can make a breakthrough of the so-called 50 limit on the 50% mark. And in the Action Plan announced by the government in 2005 on Solid Waste Management, the focus on waste processing at its latest stages.
Mr. Alvin Young. The Civic Party submitted a proposal. I want to make a few points in the next few minutes. Secretary, the Civic Party and residents have met the Bureau on the Chongkuan-O landfill. I'm sure you are aware of the problems we face. I understand the government has suggested some mitigation measures. And I know you're hoping to gain the support of the residents. But there are a few things I'm not sure if you're aware of this. Sometimes you mention some measures, but these are things you cannot act upon and this is what disappoints the residents. For Wanpo Road, the residents' biggest complaints is that it's a road for trash. When the RCVs pass through, sometimes they speed and... And I think this sometimes a landfill becomes a dumping site for their own trash, for the trash generated from the vehicles. This is Junchang Street. It's a small road adjacent to Wanpo Road. Why do the vehicles dump their trash here? The answer is very simple. It's because they are carrying too much load and they are worried that they cannot enter the main site. That's why they are dumping their trash nearby. The dumping sites operate, the landfills operate from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And what happens with the six or seven hours in midnight? I'm sure you are aware of these problems. And if you are aware of it, what have you done to improve the situation? And if you say you are not aware of the situation, does it mean your frontline staff hiding this away from you? And these are some of the reasons why the residents are losing trust in the government. If you're saying that this landfill is only used for collecting construction waste, I think this is allowable. If you cannot even control, if you cannot even monitor the refuels vehicles, what can you do in the future? And the governments who are living in Chongkuan-O hopes the government can do something.
Mr. Cheung Kwok Keng. Thank you, Chairman. I'm a Saikong District Councilor. On the government's proposal to extend the Chongkuan-O landfill to solve as the main answer to solve solid waste problems, they are ignoring the government's, the residents' pledge towards waste management. The Chongkuan-O landfill is about to be filled up and I'm sure everyone knows about this. And the residents wants a permanent closure of the Chongkuan-O landfill. The landfill is less than one kilometer away from residential developments. And for years and years, they have brought lots of problems for the residents. Does the secretary know about this, especially the problem of odor? It has bothered the residents for so long. And since 1994, when the landfill was commissioned, one-third of Hong Kong's solid waste has been processed there. The Chongkuan-O residents have done their parts. They have suffered environmental problems for years. And with the Chongkuan-O landfill about to be saturated, the Chongkuan-O residents ask for a permanent closure of the landfill so that they can enjoy a better environment. This is a very reasonable and legally viable request. In recent years, the government has made multiple attempts to propose the landfill extension and they have not succeeded. In 2010, the government tried to force the landfill extension by administrative means, which has been opposed, rejected by LECO. And the Chongkuan-O landfill extension was postponed indefinitely. The government is ignoring the residents' opposition voices from the public and district council. And in May this year, the government announced the Action Blueprint for Sustainable Use of Resources. And it has again raised the idea of landfill extension as the only solution for solid waste disposal. And this shows the government's thinking on MSW. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Long Lee. Thank you, Chairman. I live in Chongkuan-O. I moved into Chongkuan-O when I was nine. And at that time, the landfill was already a nuisance to the residents. There were a lot of flies. And now there is this very serious odor problem. In 2009, there were 548 cases or complaints of odor and in 2011, over 1,000. And why is it that you are still proposing to extend the landfill despite the many complaints from the residents about odor? You should pay attention to the quality of living of the residents. So yesterday, I went to collect some air from the landfill. And I have written here, this is in fact poison. So you know, if you take a sniff, then you want to faint. And if you keep on breathing in such air, sooner or later, you will die. And then concerning PM 2.5 on suspended particulates, the EPD has not published any data concerning PM 2.5. Then in the Action Blueprint, recently published, it has said that there will be some measures adopted to monitor the level of PM 2.5. Why is it that we are so concerned about PM 2.5? These particulates may trigger upper respiratory illnesses. Now, because of the operation of the landfill, there is a lot of dust and as a result, there are a lot of suspended particulates in the air. In fact, the consultant doctor of the E N T Department of Chongkuan-O Hospital once said that air pollution would make those with allergy suffer from a deterioration in their conditions. I know that high-ranking officials usually go to private doctors, but that we ordinary members of the public have to go to government clinics and government hospitals. Let's look at the waiting time of the E N T specialty in Chongkuan-O Hospital. The longest waiting time is 140 weeks or 30 months, 35 months rather, and that's about three years. So I want you to know that Chongkuan-O residents really feel extremely disturbed.
Yes, Mr. Cheung Kam Lan. Yes, I want to declare that I am a Saikong District Councilor and I've been living in Chongkuan-O since I was two years old. The Action Blueprint recently published states that the sand landfill or the Chongkuan-O landfill should be extended. I want to say that the Chongkuan-O tunnel is already very congested and I am worried that this problem may deteriorate. And so my colleagues oppose the proposal. According to the Transport Department, in fact, there are about 30 million vehicles every day and about 80,000 vehicles per day. And so the traffic flow, I mean, it is the third busiest tunnel in Hong Kong, only next to the Cross Harbour Tunnel and the Lion Rock Tunnel. For RCVs and dump trucks, every day there are 1,700 Chongkuan-O bound and about 2,000 Kun Tong bound. So if you add the two together, that would mean 3,800 RCV trips or dump truck trips in and out of Chongkuan-O. In fact, in July 2012, the Transport Department carried out a survey on Wanpo Road near Lo Ha's Park. There was a vehicle count and it could be seen that during the busy hours in the morning and in the evening, for buses and heavy vehicles using Wanpo Road, the figures were 690 and 740 respectively, accounting for 27% of the total traffic in that area during those hours. So Chairman, you can see that for RCVs and dump trucks, they are causing traffic congestion in the district. And if the landfill is extended, then the congestion problem will become worse. For the Lam Tin Tunnel, it won't be completed till 2020, the earliest. And we don't know whether there will be any delay to this project. So it's so much for traffic and transport. And then spilling over of waste for the landfill. In fact, in my board office, I often receive complaints from the residents, from the Kaifongs, that some RCV drivers or dump truck drivers simply dump the waste on different sections of Wanpo Road. And I would also like to say that sometimes waste or other materials simply are dropped from the RCVs or dump trucks onto the road. So the landfill must not be extended.
Yes, Chairman. Before I came to the meeting, I had read the Action Blueprint. And it has said that landfilling should be regarded as the last resort. So can I ask this point of logic? It has said that landfilling is the last resort. Why is it that the government is so keen to apply for $1.9 billion from the LECO to extend the sand landfill? If this landfill continues to operate, then as previous speakers have pointed out, Chongkuan-O residents will continue to suffer from the odor problem. There will be negative impact on the health of the residents. There will be negative impact on environmental hygiene. As early as in 1995, the government said that there would be a municipal solid waste charging scheme. Eighteen years have passed and we haven't seen the charge or that levy. I think we all understand that landfilling can't really solve the root of the problem. Land is limited, but then so long as there are people, then waste will be generated by these people. And so we need to try to find an ultimate fundamental solution to the problem of MSW. So if we have MSW charging based on the quantity of waste generated, that should be the most effective way to help reduce waste. I believe you've already looked at overseas examples like Taiwan and South Korea. I understand that the secretary went on a side visit to South Korea some time ago. And I think what they do, what they have done, have significantly reduced the quantity of MSW. Because of the implementation of the users' pay principle, there is incentive for members of the public to reduce waste. You may think that this may increase the financial burden of the residents. So I think while the MSW should be, MSW charging should be reduced, maybe there can be rates rebates or rates concessions so that members of the public will be encouraged to reduce the generation of waste and their financial burden will not be increased. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Chan, I'm Julie Chan and I represent the New People's Party. Chairman, we understand that there is waste which can't be incinerated and which can't be recovered and recycled. And so extending landfills is...
And so extending landfills is something that is urgent. But at the same time, the government should try to minimize the quantity of waste which has to go to landfills. So waste reduction is very important. In fact, last year, we gave a submission to the government, and one of the recommendations is the mandatory installation of waste segregation facilities in buildings in order to try to reduce the cost of waste reduction. In fact, in 2005, there was the policy framework for the management of MSW, and that objectives or targets were laid down for 2014. But then no review has been carried out concerning those objectives. And so we want the government to carry out a review and to enhance transparency so as to boost the confidence of the people. In fact, many people living near the landfills have been complaining about air pollution, pungent odors, and also the toxicity in the air causing hazards to pregnant women and others. And so we think there should be health impact assessments or health reports so as to alleviate the concerns of the residents. And also, we can follow the example of Western countries and set up a compensation fund in relation to landfilling activities. And also, to get, try to tackle the root of the problem, government should step up public education. The daily habits of members of the public should be changed. For example, we shouldn't cook too much food. That would help to reduce the amount of food waste. We shouldn't cook more than we can eat. And also, the MSW charging should be pursued. We should adopt the users' pay or the polluters' pay principle. Thank you. Ms. Chan San San. Yes, Chairman, I live in Lohe's Park. I want to talk about the wrong planning for Area 86, Area 85. Previously, the zoning was deep waterfront industries, and also there was the bridge. And that bridge should divert traffic from the town center. And these should be completed from 2006 to 2016. But then for Areas 85 and 86, the industrial zoning was changed to residential and Zone 137 from low intensity industries to a field bank. And the bridge will no longer be built. And as a result, we have heavy vehicles flying Wanpo Road every day. And so on Wanpo Road, we have more diesel vehicles than on other roads. And that, and for the bridge, it won't be completed till after 2020. Lohe's Park residents can only rely on Wanpo Road as an external link. And there are so many vehicles, diesel vehicles in particular, on Wanpo Road. And if there is an accident, if there is an emergency situation, how can the ambulance or the fire engine enter or reach Lohe's Park? There are so many RCVs and heavy vehicles on Wanpo Road, and most of them are overloaded. And they are accident-prone. Exhaust fumes from diesel vehicles will mean that the air quality along Wanpo Road is very poor. And these RCVs and heavy vehicles emit a lot of black smoke, and then there is liquid coming out and also dust and sand. And I understand that on very few occasions, does the government take prosecution action? And also, for these overloaded RCVs or diesel vehicles, they often dump waste along Wanpo Road or sometimes waste is transferred from one vehicle to another. We've been complaining about these problems for many years, but to no avail. So we really can't tolerate the situation anymore. Yes, Mr. Paul Ng.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to share my personal feelings. I've been living in Changguan Road for sixteen years. Mr. Lee, can you stop for a minute? Now it's Paul, Mr. Ng's time to talk. Can you please hold on a second? We'll let those who have registered to talk voice their opinions first. Thank you, Chairman. I'm the first batch of residents who moved in Lohe's Park. And I moved in because the government promised to close the Changguan Road landfill in 2010. And now you're talking about 2015. And now you are talking about extending the landfill. So why, why did I decide to move in even, even, even though I knew there was a landslide? Because I trust, I trusted the government. But now you are talking about 2015. And I have, I'm happy to put up with the smell. But now you are not making your promise, you are not fulfilling your, your promise to, to close the Changguan Road landfill. Well, maybe I, I would die before it happens. I'm already very old, and I have spent all my savings on this property. You're talking about extending the landfill. As you know, the refused vehicles, you are, you're dumping trash all along the roads, the roads and not just, not just the landfill. So in essence, the landfill is extended to, to the roads. And that's the roots of the, of the problems, of the problem of odor. A lot of residents have suffered in silence, and myself too. And the government is not credible. And within such a short time, they are forcing us, forcing the Legco to accept its, its proposal of landfill extension. This is very inappropriate. A lot of us have nose allergies because of the landfill. A lot of residents have suffered this problem. I hope the government can do its job to fulfill its responsibility. On our part, the Changguan Road residents have, have done our parts. And now it's time to ultimately close, to permanently close the Changguan Road landfill. A lot of people know when it will be closed, and you are just buying time. When you are asked this question, you are very clever. That's all from me. Thank you, Mr. Hong. Thank you, Mr. Yang Qi Gong. Thank you, Chairman. I want to share my personal experiences. Well, the landfill's impact on Changguan Road residents are obvious for all. My family has suffered. We have tolerated with, with minor, minor odor. Well, the EPD's replies are always the same, but the problem of odor is only increasing by the day. And they say that it's because of the wind, the wind direction, the odor is because of the wind direction. In the summer, when we have breezes, the odor also arrive at my home from time to time. Environmental pollution has really impacted our family. From the government website, the, they, they promised to close landfill by 2012, and I trusted the government. And we believe that there won't be any environmental problems. But the fact is, the government is powerless to stop the, the bad impacts of the Changguan Road landslide to, to the Changguan Road residents. The secretary said the government, the landfills would be saturated very soon and they won't be extended again. But the fact is, now we are, we want to build new ones. Landfills should be very, should be far from residences. But the fact is, the Changguan Road landfill is so close to residences. My, 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 my requests, my complaints are very valid, and I won't make them unless they are reasonable. Please immediately stop, please stop harmful substances from affecting residents and stop building the Changguan Road landfill so close to the residences. Thank you, Chairman. And, but on behalf of the Saikong District Council and various incorporated owners associations, we opposed the landfill extension at Changguan Road. We all know that landfills are supposed to be far from residents in order to minimize nuisance. However, and all the, the landfill suggested by the government are very, is very close to residents. And Lohe's Park, which is closest to the southeast landfill, in fact, it's only eight hundred fifty meters from, from the landfill. The government has promised a lot of improvement measures. The problem of odor is very obviously still here. According to a university survey, after, after raining or during hot, warm weather or in, in days when with south, southeasterly breezes, the problem of odor is even more pronounced. The waste is transported into Changguan Road through Changguan Road Tunnel predominantly. A lot of friends here today have mentioned that refused vehicles have contributed to the problem of traffic jam in Changguan Road. They would enter Wanpo Road and pass by many estates such as Nem Fong Square, Lohe's Park, et cetera. These refused vehicles themselves generate pollution and noise as well as odor. They have given problems to Changguan Road residents for more than twenty years. The government has also ignored the restoration of the landfill. As you all know, Faces 1, 2, 3 of the landfill have been closed because they are filled up. But since they, they were closed, we, we often see problems with sewage and landfill gases. In a lot of cases, landfills often require decades to, to be restored, and the residents are suffering. We are very concerned that for the landfill extension, even when they are closed, we will face the same problem. Even though the government only said the site will only be used to process construction waste. Thank you, Chairman. I'm a member of the Incorporated Owners of Chiming Courts. I want to say a few words on behalf of our owners. The landfill has affected us for a long time. In April 2011, the government the proposal, the landfill proposal was rebutted. And however, the government was persistent with its plan to extend landfill in Area 137. Since I moved in, there have been problems. And in, in surveys, a lot of the residents talked about the problem of odor because of the landfill. And the government promised to close the landfill on, in 2012, but it seems that the deadline is always being postponed. I hope the government can answer our requests. We want to stop all procedures to extend the landfill at Area 137. We want to know the government's plan to close the landfill. The government has implemented waste reduction efforts for years, but to very little effect. And the landfill, the landfill problem has been postponed for years, and the problem with waste has not been solved. The government should work with the commercial trade if necessary to implement waste reduction as soon as possible. Finally, on behalf of the owners of Chiming Courts, the landfill has been in operation for more than twenty years. I think the problem can be solved as soon as possible. That's all. I live in Lohe's Park. This smell is getting worse every day. And even Lohe's Park residents cannot open their windows at night when they sleep. I hope the secretary can pay attention to the health of the residents. Take your time. I don't know how to express myself. I live in Lohe's Park, and it's, the smell is getting worse every day. The problem wasn't so bad a few years ago. But with, with the landfill extension, the smell is getting worse. Thank you. Mr. Huang. I'm sorry, my Cantonese is not really good, so I will talk in Putonghua. I've been living in Changguan Road for years. I'm sorry, my Cantonese is not good. Overall speaking, I, I thought Changguan Road is, is a nice area, even though there is a landfill. My, my, my thoughts is, the government chose Changguan Road as a landfill site because it, it used to be far from residences. And now it's about to be filled up. From, uh, but currently Changguanou has hundreds of, thousands of people. There are a lot of residential developments, Lohe's Park among others. And, uh, a lot of them are very close to the landfill. And I, I actually have a lot of, um, feelings to share. Well, my colleagues, my colleagues often ask where I live and I tell them I live in Changguanou. And their immediate, immediate reaction is that, wow, it, it, this problem of smell must be very bad. Um, ocean shores or other properties. Um, there, uh, there are so many new developments in recent years and they are all very close to the landfill. So my answer to my colleagues or friends, um, my, my answer would be, uh, I, I thought the government, uh, the government chose Changguanou because it, it did not have a lot of people at that time. And we are all waiting, in fact. And now the government is extending its landfill. So what is the government's responsibility on this? Um, they need to, uh, plan things better. They have to, uh, provide a good environment for the residents, for the public.
Um, Madame Sit Siu Hong. Yes, Chairman, thank you. I'm also a resident of Lohe's Park. Now, uh, secretary and, uh, uh, secretary and also members have heard, um, many owners, um, say that when they purchased their flats, they were told that the, um, um, landfill would be closed. Now, in fact, uh, we, uh, used our hard earned money to buy our flats. The cheapest flat cost over three million dollars. And, uh, we, we would not have been so foolish as to buy the flats. If we had not been told. Or if we had, rather, if we had been told that, um, there would be, um, this landfill. Now, um, um, this, uh, is going to be a very big development, double the size of, um, Taikushing. And then, uh, I understand that, um, that, um, area one three seven will, will also be, um, used as landfill. That's not simply extension. Now, I, uh, uh, and I moved in and then some Saikong district councillors, I won't name their names, and some Legco members and some, um, reporters. Uh, in fact, um, said they didn't understand why we were so foolish as to buy flats in Lohe's Park. And they felt that we were foolish or selfish rather, because we didn't want to see, um, the extension of the landfill. I think that was because the, um, government has tried to pull wool over people's eyes. Now, in fact, we've met the officials many times. We've put our case to them. Why is it that we haven't given up? Number Salika Sheng said openly that Lohe's Park was a very, was an excellent place with fresh air. So why is it that you, um, want to let RCVs, um, ruin this magnificent place? In fact, there are many experts who think, um, that place is a, a very good place. Now, area one three seven is not an extension. It's a new landfill. How can you say this is an extension? Now say for example, um, uh, as I live in Lohe's Park, I can't say that I also live in a, in another estate. In fact, before the, um, reunification, we did well in environmental protection. Taiwan also needed to learn from us. But why is it that we haven't achieved any progress since the reunification? That is because our officials, um, unwilling to take concrete action. I understand that, um, uh, officials and members went to, uh, site visiting, in Korea. And then, um, uh, officials also said that they, um, had gone on many site visits. Right, time's up, Ms. Joyce Chan. Um, yes, many have complained about the odor problem. And I think, uh, we are concerned about the health hazards, PM two point five and also diesel vehicles. Because on Wanpo Road, there are lots of, um, diesel vehicles. So, um, you can, um, measure the air pollution index there. I, I believe the index is similar to that at, uh, in Kowloon Bay. So those, um, living along Wanpo Road are, um, taking in poison every day. We are inhaling poison on a daily basis. Um, you know, um, we have, um, uh, sites in Changguanou being sold water and after one, uh, one after another. So why is it that you're not trying to bring about improvement to the environment? Why is it that you are, um, planning to extend the, uh, landfill to area one three seven? Now, sh, uh, I think Shatin is, um, um, a good example of, um, some town planning is a self sufficient new town. So, how, why can't we have the same type of town planning or city planning in Changguanou? We already have a landfill. Why is it that we want to extend this landfill? It, 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 is this sound town planning? That's the second question. And then third, uh, it's important that we should try to encourage the reduction of, um, food waste and the dispose, uh, proper disposal of food waste. We need to tackle the problem at its source. Yes, I understand that, um, we need a place to receive the waste. We don't want Hong Kong to become an odorous spot. Incinerators are not a perfect solution, but then I think they are preferable to landfills. And Hong Kong land is extremely precious. Um, in fact, um, we have, um, sites near Lohe's Park. We have, um, the industrial sites. Uh, you look at Sweden and Norway. They are Scandinavian countries and they help one another. Uh, uh, s, maybe Sweden or Norway has an incinerator. Sweden has an incinerator and then Norway exports its, um, waste to Sweden for incineration. There's mutual help. And then, uh, in, in the past, when there was still East Germany and, uh, West Germany, I, I, um, looked at, um, what happened in, um, uh, East Germany and the waste in West Germany, um, could be transported to East Germany for incineration. Why can't we do the same for Hong Kong and Shenzhen? Uh, time's up, Ms. Chan. Uh, Ms. Chan, time's up. Um, Madame Mark. Chairman Secretary, I just want to share my feelings with you. I, um, am, um, a, um, I, I used to be a cancer patient, um, of the, um, 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 uh, larynx and I, uh, had an allergy of the nose. I moved to Lohe's Park. And I was told that the landfill would be closed in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. But, uh, now I know that, um, the government, um, has gone back on its promise. When I moved in, I was told that the, um, landfill would be exhausted and would be closed. But now we are told that, um, there will be an extension. I'm really disappointed. Three weeks ago, I went to Hangzhou, um, and I, um, observed the meeting. And the chairman, um, said that, um, those in, um, who, um, chose to live in Changguanou should have known that there was a landfill. I think, um, he is really very unsympathetic, to say the least. I have to live within, um, my means. I don't have money to buy a flat in the mid levels. And so I bought a flat at Lohe's Park. And I think the chairman of that meeting in the Saikong District Council was being very unfair to us residents. I live on the sixtieth floor. I, um, deliberately chose and bought a flat on a higher level. But I had to close the windows every day because there was a lot of, uh, because there's a lot of dust. There are many flies. I used to live in North Point. And, uh, when I, um, washed my nose of saline water, I used only one liter of saline water over, for a ten day period. But now, uh, I, uh, my respiratory, um, system suffers. I have to wash my nose many times a day. And there's a lot of secretion and there is even blood. And, uh, I, uh, have to keep on consulting, uh, my doctor. And I am now using a lot of such saline water to wash my nose. I want to say that, um, the problem can be resolved. There are eighteen districts in Hong Kong. Why is it that other districts can't share the burden? Why is it that, uh, the landfill must be in Changguanou? So I want to remind those in the public gallery that, um, I adopt a more relaxed approach when you want to clap after a deputation has finished or has spoken. But if you clap while a deputation or an individual is speaking, then in fact you are, um, disrupting him or her and you're being unfair to him or her. Mister Lee Pak Tong. Sorry, um, um, because, um, I, I haven't, um, really, um, gone through the, the, uh, formalities. Um, I want to share my personal experience of members. I, um, graduated sixteen years ago and I started to teach in Changguanou in Po Lam. And, uh, from April or May to July or August every year, um, during classes, um, our students, um, shout. Um, because, um, all of a sudden there is a very strong odor and we don't, uh, we don't know whether to close the windows or not. And, um, I want to say that teaching and learning are both affected and we had the same experience last week. So please listen to the views of, um, the residents as well as the students. We are in Po Lam and we can smell the odor. Five years ago, I moved, um, into Changguanou. And now I am living at Le Prestige, um, of Lohe's Park. And I, in fact, um, used to live in two other estates in Changguanou. And there's one common problem, odor and also dust. And you may ask, Mister Lee, uh, why is it that you still chose to move to Lohe's Park? As many residents have pointed out, we trusted the government. We were told that the sand landfill would be closed in twenty twelve. And so I trusted the government. I, um, um, was of the view that, um, people, as well as the government, needed to keep their promises. So I thought that after twenty twelve, we'll be able to enjoy fresh air. We'll be able to lead, uh, very happy family lives. But then in the past two to three months, the secretary kept talking about twenty fifteen. And what's, and what next? What's next? Twenty seventeen? I can no longer trust the government. I think our government is, um, um, not credible at all. Secretary, there are children, elderly people, um, or former patients, um, living in Changguanou. So as a government official, what should you do for these people? The government should work for the interest and the well-being of the people. The government should not do things that harm people. No, um, we don't know when this, um, landfill will be closed. Um, we are, you are, um, putting back the closure, uh, time and again. So please do something good for the residents. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Lee. Now I need to explain to residents, um, how, um, these proceedings, um, operate. In fact, we, um, announced on our website that there would be a public hearing. Members of the public were welcome to sign up and there was a deadline for signing up. And, um, that was because, um, the clerk needed to know the length of the meeting, uh, in order to make suitable arrangements. And, um, um, I understand that sometimes we see vacancies because some, um, residents have signed up, but they, um, cannot turn up. And so we, um, do, um, uh, try to accommodate, um, requests to, um, speak, um, on the spot. Uh, but we cannot promise that. So I hope that for those who have signed up, please try to attend the meeting. And for those who, uh, haven't signed up and they just appear, um, at the hearing, we can't promise that you'll get, be given a chance to speak, but we'll try our best.
Does the administration have any response? Thank you, Chairman. Um, let me make a few simple points. Just now, Miss Sitin, um, asked about the government's promise, whether we promised to, we did promise to, uh, whether we promised to close the landfill. In the last session, um, Mister Kenneth Chan asked the same question, whether the government promised to close the Changguanou landfill and when. As my colleague said earlier, the, the, uh, a very discussion, very serious discussion has, uh, at Legco has been done. And, uh, when I look at the documents, the, the answer is no, we, we did not make that promise. So how you, um, understand, uh, for, for residents? Uh, the residents need to have a very clear understanding of, of, of the truth. You have to, uh, um, be clear with the difference between a promise and, uh, and, and a wish or expectation. Nevertheless, I, I'm very happy to hear your opinion today. I'm very here to, uh, very happy to hear your requests. And the action blueprint, um, serves to, uh, uh, we, we cannot do anything about history. However, um, uh, based on the current situation of waste in Hong Kong, um, we have to look at things we can do. We have, uh, we, we took reference from other countries. Um, some of you mentioned, um, Scandinavian countries. The recycling rate is seventy percent, which is very good. However, they have been doing it for thirty years or, or so. Um, our current action blueprint is very aggressive and we're looking at what we can do within ten years. Landfills is, uh, landfills are indispensable anywhere in the world. Um, some of you said, uh, you have been, uh, monitoring our environmental fossil in Hong Kong for a lot of, uh, for thirty years. And the action blueprint is exactly our, our way of mapping out our plans for the next ten years. Now, um, our available capacity is at, is a, is at a very dangerous level. If you look at South Korea, they, they, they still need landfills and landfills are not a very backward concept. So please, please make this, uh, please be very clear about this. landfills are not a very backward concept, so please, please make this uh, please be very clear about this. So now we are uh we are starting relatively late. How can we catch up with countries like Korea? It takes time. Um, we hope we can move forward on this issue together. We will strive to balance the interests, um different interests from the society. We will listen to um different voices. For example, our current currently, our uh sewage treatment plants might generate some odor. But looking forward, uh we can uh treat, uh we will have new treatment plants for sludge in the future. Um, so that that's a response to to the to the residents' requests. The landfill extension will not increase the number of vehicles. On the other hand, we can reduce the quantities of refueled collection vehicles. So please, um we have to look at uh Hong Kong's overall interests and community needs. We will not just uh listen to the administration, we will hear the 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 views of the residents too. We have three uh members um coming up. Uh they have four minutes each. Stephen Ho, Charles Mark. Thank you, Chairman. I have some questions for the government. First, um the government have has to explain why they promised in two oh eight that the landfill will be closed in two oh one two. Um, this must be clarified because uh the residents these uh residents need to know. If the government did not lie, should shouldn't the government um uh side with the residents to tackle the problem together? If the residents can provide proof that the government is lying, um should you you ought to apologize and give justice to the property developers. I hope you can provide some written documents for our reference. Second question is, I want the secretary to explain some issues. Um, some residents asked whether you are threatening them. Um, will you have an interpretation and to to elaborate how how serious your problem of waste is in Hong Kong? Right now, we're talking about the problems of odor, transportation, landfills. These these problems are not created by the landfill extension. These are all long standing problems. If these problems can be solved, will you still uh will you support the landfill extension? How how can you solve this these problems? If you're worried about odor, if you're worried about hygiene, if you're worried about transportation, if all these problems can be solved, um would you still oppose to the landfill extension projects? I'm not questioning you, but um I hope you give us more um more opinion on what the government should do. I hope the secretary can respond to these questions. Thank you for your three questions. First, um on a written response. On on the environmental problem, um I let me respond to the second question first. In the action blueprints, it 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 covers the situation of waste management in Hong Kong. Do we have other solutions, incineration? Um, they they can only be enforced after in operation after two oh two oh. In the next ten years, how can we um reduce waste at source? If we look at more advanced countries like South Korea and Taiwan, um the the they the the their percentage of sixty percent is already a very a job very well done. For other countries, they um they have to ensure a capacity of decades. And long-term planning is required. To look at the matter from a more practical side, landfill extensions are the only solution to um to to manage our waste in the next ten years. I want to remind members. If you want to raise questions, please, uh, next, um Charles Mark. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, um residents, um for their views on the topic. The residents have raised a lot of concerns. I think we are all very understanding of their um of these problems. And nobody wants a landfill next to their home. Earlier, um I don't want to repeat Kenneth Chan's questions. We have historical problems to solve. Um, do we have any misunderstandings? Does anyone need to be held accountable? Um, I don't want to repeat myself here. We have so much waste every day, uh so much waste generated. And on the action blueprint, I think the secretary um cannot say that it's a problem yet uh to be solved in the next fifteen years. A lot of the concerns by the residents, a lot of them are very uh logical and they are asking the question, why things cannot be sped up in terms of waste reduction at source? Why can we not speed up the the construction of incinerators? My view is that um after our visit to South Korea, we 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 saw that um charging for waste is a very effective measure in reducing waste. And uh this and the residents can receive subsidies for for the effective for the affected residents. However, the the action blueprint only shows a target or objectives, but it does not lay out um uh concrete measures. I'm very concerned about transportation and traffic. I don't um go to Chongkuan O very often, but sometimes I go there. Um, I have had a bad uh I have had bad experience at Wanpo Road. I think all the all the drivers, they have stories to tell. Why can we do, why can't we do something? Um, can we have uh enclosed vehicle designs? Um, you you might have promised that something, but at the end, you have to rely on other bureaus or departments to act. So why don't we involve um the Development Bureau, the police force um to join us in in our meetings and discuss matters together? Um Chairman, I think we have a need to involve um other departments. Finally, I think you have to give us more concrete plans. Um, some, do you have any uh measures or concessions to the local residents, subsidies, et cetera? This is very common in other countries. Um, this might not be accepted by everyone. Um, however, you need to um offer something. That's all. You they 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 cannot answer in nine seconds. So these are my views. Can the government supplement? I want to re- remind members. Um, can please use more uh proper or formal Cantonese to facilitate our secretariat in terms of note-taking? Mr. Charles Mark, first, I want to declare my interest. Um, I have been a counselor for thirteen years. Um, the my own flat has encountered has experienced the same problem of odor. Um, the 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 problem of odor faced by the residents i- is much more serious than other properties like Park Central, Ocean Shores, et cetera. The previous administration um had a lot of troubles handling this problem. Today, um the the problem hasn't gone away because uh the uh the the measures have not been very effective. Um, I I I I received complaints about illegal tipping. And uh these problems have bothered the residents.
And um the planning is poor. Um, um, I I haven't um 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 really seen a document with an exact date for the closure of the landfills. Um, maybe some district councillors are 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 talking about different dates, but it doesn't mean that the government is not to blame. Yes, uh when the um uh residents bought the flats, they knew that there was the landfill nearby. But then they uh had the legitimate expectation that the landfill would be closed upon its exhaustion. So uh uh the action blueprint, it is said that sustainability is important. And um um in fact, um all Hong Kong people should um uh uh share the burden. Um, and now, um, residents are opposing the extension of the San landfill because these residents have already um really um uh um done their part, so to speak. They have had their share. I haven't received complaints concerning extension of the N Northeast NT landfill. I don't know um what happens to the Wentz landfill. Now, in fact, um secretary, um you've already heard um uh half of the uh deputations and you're going to continue to hear more views in the afternoon. Will you promise to withdraw your proposal to extend the San landfill? Yes, secretary.
Yes, I understand that um residents do have some expectations concerning the closure of the landfill. And um and I I think you made it clear that um that there were different understandings as to whether the government did promise to close the landfill um in a certain year. Uh, we're here to um listen to the views of residents together with legal members. I hope that the residents will understand that we need to um address territory-wide needs. We need to try to strike a balance among competing demands and needs, right? Um, Miss Elizabeth Quat uh would also like to um ask some her questions, and we've got only two minutes left. So um can we, uh should we extend the meeting by a few minutes so that Miss Quat can ask her questions? Or should um we ask Miss Quat to ask her questions in the afternoon? All right, Miss Quat. In fact, Chairman, at the last meeting, um I said that the bureau should try to resolve existing problems uh relating to the landfill. And I cannot set a proposed extension when the present problems have not been resolved. And then um if this extension is approved, when will the landfill be um closed? And and if we do not approve the extension, will the government stop all the measures to reduce the nuisance caused to the residents? Um, so can you promise that whether the extension is approved or not, you will still go ahead with the mitigation measures for the landfill? I'm worried that um the residents um uh will will be worried as to um when the um landfill will be closed and when or whether you will continue to carry out the improvement measures. And then if the extension is not to go ahead, then how are you going to dispose of the waste? Yes, I think these questions are meaningful, Chairman. Now, concerning uh our estimate as to when the landfill will be exhausted, now uh as a scientific approach we adopt, um we can on a conservative side. Um, and it depends on how uh how much we can achieve concerning waste reduction. So it may, we may be talking about two to three years. But then overseas experience tells us that we should try to save the um space and capacity of landfills. And so our present estimate or projection is twenty fifteen, based on the um present waste generation situation and waste reduction situation. If we can do a better job concerning waste reduction, then of course, the um um lifespan of the landfills can be extended. And then PM two point five, air monitoring stations. Yes, there are things that we will um um do as soon as possible. For example, RCVs and then other environmental improvement measures. But then if um the landfills are to receive only construction waste and not MSW, that can't be done by administrative means alone. We have to pass necessary legislation, and that may take us one to two years. And so if the landfills can't be extended, then it's quite meaningless doing the legislative amendment because um it's going to take one or two years for the legislative exercise and the life lifespan of the um landfills will only be about three years. So we will be only be um able to um do something within a span of um half a year. Miss Quat, then can the administration promise that it will continue to adopt measures to mitigate the nuisance caused by the landfill to the residents irrespective of whether the extension is approved or not? Yes, I I I think Dr. Chan can supplement. Yes, Chairman, concerning the three landfills and their operation, we will definitely comply with international standards. And um this has nothing to do with whether the extension is approved or not. For example, we're going to have capping arrangements. We will um try to extract the um landfill gas and so on and so forth. Um, we have been doing these things and we'll continue to do these things. Right, thank you very much. I think this session um is now adjourned. And please return punctually at two fifteen PM.